Support of folks in the, in the community, they would not have the funds to, to, to support these grants. But we think that that's fantastic and we're just happy to report on that. Uh, the second item, so this is our second shout out in a very short period of time for our DECA students. Uh, they, they, uh, as you can see, the competition awards were pretty interesting. It's the, the, you know, the virtual competitions are, are pretty difficult. And I, I think we're going to hear more about this because they will be moving into the virtually held DECA International Career Development Conference, uh, starting in April, and they hope that it's the first and last virtual conference. Uh, but we do have some folks, uh, moving on, and I've highlighted those students' names for you. AJ Colwick in particular, you know, uh, Mr. Colwick, uh, likes to send communications to all of us. And has been, and has been very informative, I, I should say, but Cooper Burdette, Match Huskis, um, and Rory Missile are, are some of the students who are moving on in that competition. So I, I'm going to guess that we're going to hear a little bit more about those folks, uh, further along in April, possibly at the April Board meeting, and we look forward to that, of course. Uh, our third item, our STEPS partnership is alive and well. And of course, we're all planning post pandemic now. Uh, as I, the information that I, I shared with you, they were approached by the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, DEMIST, uh, regarding a prevention grant and have put that grant together. We are partnering with them once again. Uh, we'll serve as their fiscal agent, if you will, which is what we did on the, the federal grant that you know, uh, STEPS was, was founded on. So there's no additional cost at this point in time to the board budget, but it's nice to be able to partner with STEPS. We have the opportunity to bring a significant amount of funding into our community for prevention services. And we know those benefit the students in our community and the, and the community in general. So kudos to STEPS for taking on that challenge. And we're happy to be partners with them and to assist in that effort. South End Elementary School Roof Repair, a little less exciting, but if you're Mr. Romano, it's actually very exciting. Uh, that's been a bit of an issue, as you know, over the, over the years. And Mr. Romano, through his continual efforts, you know, he's, he's a bulldog on, on these things. And, um, found the right consultant to work with. They were able to discover what the source of the problem was. And, uh, those roof repairs are going to be taken on by the, by the vendor. And hopefully completed over the April break. You know, things are weather related when we, when we get to roof repairs and anything that happens outside, but at least that's the plan. So we hope to see that happen. Uh, the shingles will be a match. They, they probably will not be an exact match, but they'll be a reasonable facsimile. The last item that I have has to do with the district-based vaccine distribution. District base is probably a misnomer. It's really a partnership with Hartford Healthcare. As you know, I've, I've shared the information Hartford Healthcare stepped up to the plate and provided a clinic a couple of weeks ago. We had over 500 individuals who received the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. I received a quite a few emails from our teachers, parent educators, and other staff, who were very, very, very thankful for the opportunity. Uh, and also they gave, uh, kudos to Hartford Healthcare for how smooth everything ran. So I expect that this clinic, which will be this Sunday, we originally thought it was going to be Saturday, but it will be Sunday, will run just as smoothly. There'll be fewer numbers. We were over 500 last time. There'll be about 125, give or take, this time around. And, um, those folks will be receiving the Pfizer vaccine, which means some point, you know, three weeks down the road, they'll be scheduling their second, uh, second appointments. So, uh, and other folks in between. I mean, clearly we have more employees than that, uh, and those who choose to be vaccinated are, are, are doing so. If they're not doing them in these clinics are, are doing so under their own auspices through, uh, the various organizations where they can, where they can register. So we're glad that that's moving along. I think that's a big relief for, for lots of folks.
And, and some people, uh, Mr. Canelon, did very well with the shot and some were real. I think you heard about those that were real babies when they got the shot. Did you hear stories about that?
Not, I, what I heard was that.
There was one person that was really a baby.
Staff, staff members, staff members reported to me that they did in fact have, many staff members did in fact have a reaction. Actually, this, seriously though, what I, what I do want to say, because this is a, a public session. Yeah. I, I received a call from, uh, someone in the community, and I think some people were under the impression that this was a free, a free day, if you will, because you know, we rescheduled a school day from that Monday, the 15th to, to June 18th. That wasn't a free day.
No.
That's, that's a rescheduled day. And I, I think it was important, as I said, I had a, a conversation with a, a, a member of our community who, it's like the game of telephone tag. They hear things and it, and it sometimes it takes on a negative connotation. So that workday is still a workday. It just happens to be on June 18th instead of March 15th. That's all. So again, we're, we're pretty pleased that Hartford Healthcare stepped up to the plate. They're wonderful to work with. Uh, they helped us out and we're, we're hoping that this contributes to the, you know, the battle against the pandemic. One last editorial comment from everything that the department, the State Department of Public Health has been telling us and our local Department of Public Health, this is not the time to let anyone's guard down. And we, we still need to make sure that we are implementing all of the mitigation strategies that we've been used to. So we'll be doing that in schools. Our, our staff needs to double down on that and make sure that we're doing everything possible to keep one another, keep all of our students and all of our staff members safe. And that's, so that's a point of emphasis. And I, I want, I, I'm hoping that our, our community hears that as well. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canelon. I appreciate that. Um, next we have communications from our wonderful student reps. I don't know who wants to go first.
Yeah, I will. Good evening, everybody.
Hi Brett.
I hope you're all doing well. It's been a little bit. So, uh, well, first I want to say thank you again for, uh, the brief shout out, Mr. Carmody. I appreciate it. And we also want to say congratulations to the new Assistant Principal at SHS, Mrs. Northcud. So I know we said, uh, congratulations earlier, but you know, from the student body to you, congratulations.
Thank you.
So the SHS Swimming and Diving Team participated in their CCC postseason meet experience yesterday. The Blue Knights competed against Farmington High School at Cornerstone Pool in West Hartford. And the following are notable performances from yesterday's meet. Landon Colby was the double winner in the hun- in the 200 IM with a time of two double oh five step, point five seven. And in the 100 Fly, breaking the Southern High School record that has stood since 1992 with a new record of 52 seconds flat. Alex Rosiani took first in diving, setting a new 11 dive school record with a score of 463.90. The Blue Knights Summers and Divers finished with a six-one dual meet record in its CCC region. This went during our waiting the final individual event standings from all of the CCC and state meets.
Uh, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Uh, the defending CIAC Class L and state open champion girls gymnastics team won the CCC Champion Meet this past Sunday afternoon and were the overall leaders in all four categories of vault, bars, beams, and floor exercise. The girls posted an undefeated five to zero dual meet record during the CCC regular season, remaining unbeaten for the last two seasons.
Great.
The girls and boys indoor track teams were able to compete in three special outdoor meet exhibitions against Middletown, Xavier Mercy, and Avon in the month of March.
And continuing for sports, the Sullington Hall Co-op Ice Hockey Team finished first in the Triple C South with a record of eight-one-one, losing in the Triple C South semifinals. The girls ice hockey co-op ice, the girls ice hockey co-op, um, team earned the second seed in the Triple C tournament before losing in the semifinals as well. The girls basketball team won the Region B Regular Season Championship with a 10 to two record and advanced to the Triple C Championship Bracket Semifinals before losing to undefeated Newington Team. And the CIAC Winter Season concludes for Blue Knights athletes, when the boys basketball team plays its final game in the Triple C Division Three Constellation Bracket tonight at the high school versus Rocky Hill. This game can be viewed on the SHS YouTube channel, and the Blue Knights Cheerleaders have supported the basketball teams all season long.
Thank you. Now Brett and Al, you're, both are seniors?
Yeah.
So were you excited about the news from Mr. Pepe about all the senior activities?
Yeah, we were about to go through some of them.
The kids had to be really excited, huh? You deserve it. You've been through a lot and we're ha- we are so happy for you kids, really, that we're able, that you're able to have that. That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next we have Mr.
We were done. We have, we have a couple more, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
It's okay. Um, now onto SHS events. No, you're fine. Don't worry. It was a long sports section. I know. Um, the juniors took the SAT yesterday at the high school. Well, grades nine, 10, and 12 had a day of remote learning. Uh, navigating the college experience slash NCAA virtual program was held tonight at 6:30. And the quarter, and quarter three ends next Thursday, April, April 1st.
So we were just talking about for senior events. Um, some of them, or what was rolled out, uh, last night was that there will be a senior pep rally at Fontana Field. There will be a senior class night on our athletics field, senior prom at Lake Compounds, and there will also be a senior motorcade. I should say that there, all, all of this, all of this is tentative and there are no dates currently, um, because of the still evolving situation.
And a couple more is that we're going to be having a National Honor Society and a World Language Honor Society combined event on the Fontana Field. We're also going to be having an awards and scholarship night on Fontana Fields, um, as well as graduation on the same fields. And then lastly, we're going to have a graduation party at Lake Compounds. So we're pretty excited.
As I said, we, we are really happy for you. Any comments from any board members? Joseph?
Yeah, I, I had a quick question. Um, as far as the senior, uh, festivities go, do, are you guys still going to require volunteers from the community that we've done prior to? And maybe, um, Mr. Canelon or Frank, you guys could, um, weigh in on that. Cause, uh, you know, certainly, um, you know, I'm, I'm curious, cause you know, I've, I've had a couple of people ask me.
Yo, that is a great question, uh, Mr. Wyszewski. I have, that, that's, I, I do not know. Um, I would direct you to Mr. Pepe for that one. Uh, I, I'm sure he's the man who has all of the information.
Mr. Pepe.
We do have, uh, an all-night grad committee party, uh, that will, there's, there are letters that will be going out shortly. Uh, as you know, the all-night grad party runs, uh, completely on donations and the generosity of the community. And we will absolutely need volunteers. So that information is all coming soon. I just proofread, uh, edited and gave back all of the correspondence. That'll be coming out shortly.
Awesome. Thanks, Frank.
And Board of Ed members are still invited to volunteer, Mr. Pepe, as we've done in the past. Just saying, Mr. Piszewski.
Well, I, I, I actually want to volunteer my time. You know, I feel like I've been volunteering my time a lot lately with, uh, all the board, Board of Ed festivities, that, uh, it'd be nice to sort of give back a little to the students. So I think it's great that we're, we're making headway and back on, back on wood. We're, we're going to keep making progress. I love it.
Any other board members? Well, thank you, kids. Appreciate your report. Um, moving on, we have the Finance Committee report, Mr. O'Shanna.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. Uh, the Finance Committee met last, uh, week on March 16th. And the board packet we all received, I had a lot of great, uh, detail explaining each of the agenda items, but we'll go through them now. The first item on the agenda was the self-insurance report. And as you saw, the claims for this year continue to run under budget. Uh, the Self Insurance Committee actually had a meeting later that week, uh, to review the claims and to go over some renewal information from our consultants. So there's some, uh, good news there. The next item on the agenda was a transfer of fund request. Uh, it was detailed in the package. We were able to actually use our internal staff instead of contracted vendors to do cleaning at four of our schools. So there is a request for transfer of funds, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of funds as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. The next item we did was the preschool tuition rates for regular education. Uh, the Finance Committee reviews this information annually and based on our his, history of fee increases, uh, the comparative rates that are going on in town and the enrollment numbers, the Finance Committee is recommending this year, no increase to the rates for next year. Uh, so with that, I'd like to move to approve keeping the 2021, 2022 preschool tuition rates the same as the 2020, 2021, uh, school year as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Carmody, I'm going to abstain from that vote.
Oh, Mrs. Clark. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Linda, you got that? Linda? Okay. I'm sorry. So that motion carries with an abstention from Mrs. Clark. Okay, Mr. O'Shanna, go ahead.
All right. The next item on the agenda, we discussed the YMCA before and after care, uh, program rates for 2021, 2022. And again, all the detail presented in the package is there. And you can see, uh, the proposed increase that's being asked for covers the estimated contractual wage increases along with the, uh, MERS contributions. So I'd like to move to approve the 2021, 2022 YMCA lease rates as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda, we, uh, we discussed the award of lawn mowing bids. Uh, the packet explains how the bid was drawn up and it is allowing one vendor to actually be accountable for all the grounds work at, uh, the four affected schools. The remaining seven sites, uh, seven schools are in the second year of their existing contract, so they were not part of this bid. I think the great news I saw here is that we actually received eight bids. So we're starting to get more people bidding on our work, and I think that's a, that's a great thing. I don't know. I mean, the packet was pretty clear. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Uh, but if not, I'd like to move to award the three-year lawn mowing and debris cleanup at Flanders Elementary School to BMS and Hatton Strong and Thalberg Elementary Schools to Little K's as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries. Okay, go ahead, Mr. O'Shanna.
Uh, the next item on the agenda was the financial update for this, uh, food services program. Uh, Mrs. Mellett took us through the balance sheet and income statement, uh, for the program. And Mrs. D'Nello then went into, uh, the new COVID-related funding that's available for the district and how it could possibly work for us, although there are still some outstanding questions. Again, the packet contains some, uh, great summarization of, of the details. And I'm going to ask, uh, both Mrs. Mellett and Mrs. D'Nello to walk through some of the details, uh, for the board. But before I do, you're going to see as part of that, there's a proposal for an additional loan to the food service program in order to keep it viable. Um, and as a reminder, this board previously approved a $300,000 loan last year. And as we discussed that, there was an understanding that, uh, it, it could potentially be highly unlikely that we would see payback on that particular loan. The one we're talking about tonight, uh, we'll talk about in a moment, is going to be very different. Um, you know, and the, the other thing is, is at the time of that first one, looking at how the food service program was doing and the, and the, the issues it was facing at the time, we discussed as a board that there was probably going to be a need for a second loan. So we're, we're there now. And so I'd like to ask Mrs. Mellett to start the conversation with some of the detail that she provided us.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. O'Shanna. Um, as he stated, we gave a financial update through February operations. In your, I'll give you a bird's eye view. I could go on into a lot of details and I won't do that to you, but feel free to ask any questions. If you look at the comparative income statement that's part of your package, the bottom line on that shows you the net income or loss in this situation for the eight months ending February 2021 of $240,000. This is compared to a net loss in the previous eight-month period of February of 2020 of $66,000. The main difference in our loss situation this year is a reduction in the revenue. Part of the reduction of the revenue is due to the lower enrollment or lower student, number of students in the schools. We have a number of remote students who aren't participating on a regular basis. Um, although we do have the evening pickup three times a week for meals. So there are kids getting meals in that fashion. We've also had random school closures through, due to COVID situations throughout the year. And we also have, um, the hybrid model at the high school, which is a great reduction in the number of students physically in the buildings. If you refer to the comparative income statement, you'll see there's a first subtotal at the top that is a subtotal of cash sales. That is showing $81,000 of cash coming in this year versus 787,000 in the previous year. This category relates to the full pay and reduced pay students going through the lines for breakfast and lunches and actually, um, paying for their meals. This year, as you know, when we shut down in March, the government instituted a new program for the seamless summer option where any s- s- school-aged child was eligible to get a free breakfast and lunch. So since, um, the current year has no cash collections coming through, you'll see that's the reduction in the cash sales revenue generated for the eight months ending. And that was a reduction of $700,000, which is significant. The next subject, or the next subtotal down is a summary of the government reimbursable meal. So any of the meals that were given out through either the lines at the schools or the pickup program in the evenings, those meals, we were able to be reimbursed by the government. So you'll see we did increase on that line item. We went from, we have $846,000 this year versus 430 in the previous year. So that's an increase of 400,000. But if you net that against the loss of the cash sales above, it, that is about $290,000. Um, that's the, almost the entire reduction in our revenues this year. So that explains most of the loss. Um, the, if you look towards the bottom, there's a, a total of all the expenses and you'll see the expenses for the eight months only changed $97,000. So the vast majority of our, uh, shift in, uh, situation is due to the revenues coming in. You will see in the top section, under the subtotal of grant revenues in the current February of 2021 column, we do have 65,597 of revenue that came in through a grant, and that was through the CRF grant. Um, that was in the fall or in the September through December period. We were able to be reimbursed with, uh, extra packaging costs that we needed for social distancing and, um, having the three different, or different locations throughout the school where children are eating. And as well as extra payroll for, uh, people helping to clean the tables in between the lunch shifts and items like that. So that $65,000 is coming into the food service program for the first time because of the CRF grant. As Mr. O'Shanna stated, we do have other funds that may, other grant funds that may be coming towards us. But at this current time, we're not sure how we can apply it to the food service operations. There is a possibility, and that is why, as we're recommending our loan to the program, we made the recommendation vague in the, as far as the repayment. So we're suggesting that a $500,000 loan be made to continue the food service operations in light of the fact they didn't cover what's on the balance sheet, but our cash balance, even though we did give them 300,000 in a previous loan, the cash balance has gone down significantly this year. Um, at the end of February, it's at $79,000. Although there is $451,000, if you look at the balance sheet all the way on the right-hand side, there's a receivable from the government that just hasn't been, um, sent to us yet. So we are expecting $450,000. Um, if you flip the balance sheet over, you'll see the, uh, liability sign, which shows, um, of the cash that's in the bank, 116,690 dollars relates to student prepaid balances. That means that students have put money into their My Payments Plus account and we're holding it on their behalf. So $116,000 is owed to students. Um, and then we're also showing the $300,000 loan, um, that we made to the program. So I know that's a lot of information. I sit and look at this all the time. So I'm just trying to give you a few of the highlights. And when I say that we owe that money to the students, it's sitting in their accounts on behalf. When we hopefully go back next year to a normal operations, they'll be able to draw it down, um, as they're eating their meals. So to return to our recommendation from the Finance Committee, we are recommending a $500,000 loan to the food service program from the non-lapsing fiscal year 20 account. The need for the loan, as we stated, is supported by a low cash balance. We're anticipating continued losses during this current fiscal year. We've also been notified by many of our vendors that effective 7-1, many of the paper products and packaging are, the costs will be increasing across all industries. Um, and then we have cash flow concerns for the startup of our new school year come September. We want to make sure that we can, um, buy the food, the packaging, have the payroll and have all that supported until the cash either starts coming in from students paying again or until, if we have to stay with the same model, we would have to wait for the government reimbursement for the September sales, which usually doesn't arrive to us until late November or early December. So we're making this recommendation for the loan of 500,000. And we're also saying that we would like to, as part of the motion, to develop the repayment plan in the spring of 2022. That will give us some time to see where the operations, um, landed at the end of June, get them up and running for the beginning of the school year. We'll also be able to take a look at any of the grant funds that are available to us. As you all know, money is coming to us, but there's still not clear guidelines on how we can use it to help support food service programs. So this will allow us to be better educate ourselves, take a good recommend, a good look at where we're at and make a recommendation at that time as far as a repayment of this 300,000. So we're not saying that it's, it's different from the $300,000 loan that we previously made. We will come back with a recommendation for repayment schedule in the spring. So I'll leave it there and I'm, I'm well, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah.
Yeah, Matt, I just have a clarifying question. So essentially, um, because of the uncertainty with the government funding, I guess, like the final payment for this year, if you will, now, um, uh, do we think that that's going to essentially help in conjunction with the 500,000? And, and these were things I was thinking about after our, our committee meeting.
Sure. Are you talking, are you referring to the, um, on the balance sheet, the 451,000 for the government receivable? Is that what you're referring to?
I, I think so, because again, like I'm, I'm a little confused with this, um, with, with that, because there's still some that's unaccounted for as far as like, we don't know exactly how much that we're getting from the government to put toward food service as of right now.
Right.
If, if that essentially helps to offset some of the, um, in the red, if you will, will that then, uh, again, like I, I guess, i- if, if there's extra funds where it doesn't need to be there, would they then be shifted back?
So the receivables that you're seeing on the balance sheet that I'm showing you.
Right.
Are the results of the meals that we gave out. And it's simply a timing difference. So the revenue is being reported on the income statement.
Oh.
By showing it as a receivable, it means we've earned it, but the government hasn't physically paid for it yet. So those funds will come to us. We've never had a problem collecting any of that. It's like clockwork. It's like clockwork. It's just slow and coming. So there's no doubt in my mind that that four hundred and fifty one thousand is coming to us. And yes, that will help fund the operations through the end of this year. So we're looking for the five hundred thousand to help supplement this year, but also to help us get through that September through December period in the fall with the startup costs and.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Any other board members with questions? Dave, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you mentioned that there's a sizable amount of money owed to the students that a hundred and hundred and thousand dollars. And the, the seniors that will be graduating or out of the system this year, will that money be given to them early on in this, in this current school year, or will it have to be reimbursed to them after?
Sure. Parents can re-request a refund of their My Payments Plus money at any time. We have in the past gone through a large project of refunding old balances to graduated students. In the past school year, we did not address any refunds because of the situation with COVID. All of those funds are still in their My Payments Plus account, and I have a, a listing that gets generated from the system that details every student and what their balance is. So all of that money is just sitting and it's available at any time. But at this point, we have not refunded or made efforts to refund those to the seniors last year.
And Mr. Gernowski, just to add to what Mrs. Mallett had said is our plan is at the end of each year is to send out letters to the graduating seniors. They get a form letter that tells them the amount that they have for a balance and they have an option to request a refund. They have an option to roll that funding over to another student that's currently in the district or to donate it back to the program to help offset costs for maybe a student that couldn't afford meals. So last year we sent out a lot of letters because we were doing a cleanup. Due to the shortage of cash this year, we chose to wait. So we hope to do the letters to the graduates of twenty twenty this spring. And then in the fall of twenty twenty one, we will do the, the plan would be to do letters to the graduates of twenty twenty one. But anyone can ask at any time and they get a refund, but just due to the, the shortage of cash, we weren't in a hurry to make refunds unless they were asked.
Understood. I just want to make sure that we just don't run into the same situation we had before where we had a, a big list and
Yes.
Right.
No, we're on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the only other thing, if there's no other questions, I think Mrs. Mallett clearly outlined the need to make the loan right now to the program. And I just wanted to explain the uncertainty of the grant funding coming. You've all heard about the ESTR funding of the one point eight million dollars. They've, the State Department of Ed has been very clear that some of that funding will be able to be utilized for the food service program. However, they have not provided us the guidelines of the types of reimbursements we can utilize, that we can get reimbursements for. Is there going to be any reimbursement for loss of sales revenues? So once we have those guidelines, our plan is to certainly tap into the ESTR funding or the new, the latest round of funding that you heard about at our Board of Finance meeting last evening, the American Recovery Plan. So we are fairly confident that this loan that you would be voting on tonight of five hundred thousand, that next spring, there will be some type of recommendation for a repayment of a portion, at least of that principal. I won't guess, you know, I don't like to guess of what that repayment principle will look like, but at least it'll give the committee an opportunity to, even if it's making one principal repayment with a plan for future principal repayments in the future.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We have to keep, we have to keep the food program going, Sherry and Jen. Mr. O'Shaughnessy.
Yeah, so, and I'd like to make a motion, but before I do, I actually want to just say, because I see Niall Lewinsky is, Lewinsky is in the room with us right now. And I just want to do a little shout out to her, you know, she's, she's building the plane as it's in the air as we're going through this thing, right? So she's got a, a food service program that schools open, schools close. This is moving, this is moving. She's got staff issues, she's moving around, she's doing a whole mess of stuff right now to keep this system going. So thank you to you and for you and your staff for all the work that you're doing to keep this thing going. It's critical, critical to the students and critical to their success. So thank you.
Thank you for your support.
So with that, I'd like to move to approve a five hundred thousand dollar payment from the fiscal year twenty twenty non-lapsing account to the food service program in the form of a loan. The Finance Committee, the Board of Education will meet in the spring of twenty twenty two to review the financial statements of the program and any COVID-related grant receipts. And then the Finance Committee will then make a recommendation for a principal repayment to the non-lapsing fund to the full Board of Education.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. O'Shaughnessy. Does that conclude your report, Mr. O'Shaughnessy?
Oh, no. Oh, no. There's still more to go. It was, it was a good meeting. It was a long meeting. So the next issue we discussed, we had a financial update through February twenty eighth of twenty twenty one, as well as an update on the current non-lapsing account. And I'm going to ask Mrs. D'Nello to, to walk us through some.
Thank you, Mr. O'Shaughnessy. So the committee had an opportunity to review an expenditure report through February twenty eighth of twenty twenty one. Essentially, this expenditure report was done with the big assumption that the Board of Education would choose not to make any further reimbursements to our operating budget from any COVID-related grant funding. You'll recall that we used the coronavirus relief fund through December and we utilized all of those dollars. We're doing our last drawdown for reimbursement this month. And when we met with the Finance Committee and presented to you in January, shared a document that outlined a whole host of expenses that were not going to be covered by grant funding at that time. And I'll draw your attention to the sheet following the expenditure report that I did a side-by-side comparison of the January Finance Committee meeting, where we had one point two million dollars of anticipated cost for the remote teachers, for additional nursing and custodial time, for additional food service costs. And the thought process at that time, not knowing what additional grant funding would be, would be that we would utilize the funding remaining in the non-lapsing account to offset the operating budget. However, we're currently in a position where we know we're running a surplus in the operating budget. And so you'll see the side-by-side comparison for the March update was we've already taken the three hundred thousand dollars from the non-lapsing for food service with the motion you made this evening of an additional five hundred thousand. That would allow us to keep one point one million dollars set aside from the non-lapsing education fund of twenty twenty to start working on some of those projects that you have seen. And again, we've attached in this, in this report. Having said that, our operating budget, based on the assumptions that we made through February, we're anticipating a year-end balance of somewhere around one point two million dollars. And I feel that that's a conservative estimate at this point. We still have quite a bit of supply funding that hadn't been used. I made an assumption that we would use fifty percent of the supply funds that are still available from now through the end of the year as students are returning to school. We took into account that we would cover the cost of the remote teachers with the operating budget. And the committee was in a consensus that they would allow the administration to continue working through maximizing our year-end dollars so that we have, we're in the best situation moving into the twenty one, twenty two year. So whether it's having funding left for the current year to go to a new non-lapsing account for twenty one, if it's maximizing the dollars that we have left in the non-lapsing account and maximizing the new ESTR two funding that we're receiving. So rather than tapping into ESTR two funds to cover these reimbursable expenses, some of which we might look at, but our plan would be to try to do what we can to cover any COVID-related costs with operating dollars to maximize the grant funds that we'll have going into next year to help offset the learning loss, social, emotional toll on students, all of the things you've been hearing about. So I'm hoping that the rest of the board is in agreement with that. We will provide another update in May and, you know, look at whether or not any specific purchases need to be made with current operating dollars and a purchase plan at year end at a later date.
Questions from anyone?
The last two things that we had were under miscellaneous. We discussed the district-wide copier lease that we have, and we have a proposal from our vendor, Automated Business Solutions for a new lease, which will include sixty three new units and the ability to reuse fourteen of our current machines. We'll also have the ability to add a document management system to, across the district to the machines and still come in below the current monthly lease rate that we're paying now. So the committee thought this made sense, so the administration is actually going to bring a proposal back to us at our May committee meeting. And last but not least, we talked about the current purchasing policies with an S that we have and the need to create one comprehensive policy that's in compliance with the, the uniform guidelines for audit. So this is going to be a discussion at the upcoming Personnel Policy Committee meeting. So long meeting, we had a lot of stuff to accomplish, a lot of financial information, I think. Thanks to Mrs. D'Nello and Mrs. Mallett for their hard work and, and education to us.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And so many things that are just unknown right now for us, and so we have to wait. So appreciate all your work on the committee and thank you very much. Next on the agenda, which I lost, I think is personnel report. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
Move to approve the personal report as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Could I just make a note that there were two people here on that report? Want to thank them for their service. One of them just spoke, Sherry and Tim is also there. It was, I think, a different kind of report than we normally get because of the magnitude of, and not that anyone retiring or leaving is, is insignificant, but it was noteworthy that those two terrific people are retiring.
Well, we certainly will take note of both of them at a later time, I'm certain.
Trying to stay under the radar, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, yeah.
I heard, I heard Sherry is second guessing her decision, so you know.
Oh, yeah. I don't think so, Joe. So I did have a motion. Did I have it seconded? Yes, right? And all those, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And Michelle, are you still there? Thank you for all the work that's being done in personnel. I know it's been a very difficult year and we appreciate all the work that you and your helpers do. Thank you. Also, the last thing, I don't know where my agenda is, so tell me, am I right? Is it the Leonard and Gladys Joel Scholarship?
It was a town government.
Oh, I'm sorry, town government communication. Does anybody have anything? Joe?
Yeah, so I, I was part of the, the recent Open Space Committee meeting. And, you know, there, there was a bit of a discussion as far as if we had spoken with any of the local, well, any of the PTOs in district, and I, I know that we had some Zoom sessions planned and, and that type of thing. And I, I didn't know if there's any information that I could bring back to the board from administration or, you know, in, in discussions about the, the property.
Joe, what meeting were you at, Joe?
It was the Open Space Committee.
Okay.
Meeting. So again, like they're, you know, especially as a collective, we're, we're all offering, you know, any, any help to speak to PTOs and that type of thing. You know, just Paul's our chairperson, Chiplinski. So, you know, again, if there's any, any help that we could provide, to please reach out and let, let us know.
Well, I, I don't know anything. Tim, we did talk about that. I mean, I know Mark showed a, did a whole presentation. And I did speak to the town council on behalf of the Board of Ed. Do something else, Tim.
So two, two things typically, you know, when, and I'm going to guess that was what Mr. Bacheski is referring to is the purchase of development rights.
Yes.
Of the property that's on, on the golf course, correct? Because that's not just about open space. It's, it's a development rights, which is technically open space. But don't worry, Mr. Bacheski, I got, I, I got you on that. I understood.
Thank you. Thank you for understanding me, Tim.
You're, you're, you're welcome. So two, so two things. One is that typically when things like this come up, if we're in a quote-unquote "normal" year, in my visits to the PTOs, which I typically begin in, you know, January and talk about the budget, yada, 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 I would, I would mention things such as that, like we did with the waste treatment plant, all, all of those things, that, you know, purchase the municipal center, all of those. So we're doing it a little bit differently this year. What I did was take the, well, there's two things. The first is that I took the presentation and made sure that we forwarded that out, not just to representatives who, of our families who belong to the PTO, because not everybody belongs to the PTO, but sent that out to all of our families. And then since that is in May, my decision was that I would wait a little bit and create our, our own. Perhaps, perhaps I will ask Mr. Pepe to tutor me in his PSA technique and we'll put a little something together, because if you send it too early, it gets lost.
Yeah.
Terry, you know, Terry and I used to have on our counter what we called the basket of no return. When, when things came home from schools in paper form, we, we would put it in this nice wicker basket that we had in our counter, never to be seen again the next three or four years. And then we would end up recycling them. So now we have virtual baskets of no return. And I think it's appropriate to wait a little while and make sure that the information that goes out to our families goes out prior to the May fourth referendum. So that's still part of the plan, but I think that addresses the question or the issue that you raised, Mr. Bacheski. So we're, we're still on that. It's not going to be a school-to-school issue, but it'll be more of a, let's, let's send that out to everybody and send that out to all of our families, not just the, you know, twelve people.
Right, right.
And PTO meetings.
So that, that's perfect. I'll, I'll bring that back to the committee to let them know that it's being handled.
We're, we're still, we're still working on it. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Mr. Canal, if I could offer just one piece of follow-up to that. I think before you push out your public service announcement, you might actually want to talk to Mr. Arroyan. He's known as the influencer at the high school.
Apparently, yes.
During the high school assistant principal interviews, all, many of the candidates, we actually had to start keeping a tally, started to give shout-outs when Mr. Arroyan introduced himself and said, "You're the guy from the Southington High School YouTube channel. I know who you are." Mr. Pepe did not get as much fanfare. So if you're looking for a celebrity or, you know, a marketing connection, it might be Mr. Arroyan.
Well, I'll take that under advisement. Thank you.
That's really good. Okay, now, and make sure I'm on the right thing on the agenda, because I lost the page. Is the last thing, the Leonard and Gladys Joel Scholarship?
Yes.
I tried to get that.
Next to the last. Next to the last.
Is, am I right? Am I on the right spot? All right, so Dave.
Yes.
Gernowski, Bob Brown and Dave Alvo were on that committee, correct?
Nope.
No, I was not. Missy Cipriano.
Oh, Missy, I apologize.
No worries.
Okay, I, I moved that the Board of Education approved the recipient recommended by the Leonard and Gladys Joel Scholarship Subcommittee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion care. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and the last is the setting of the graduation date.
Move to approve Friday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty one, as the date for the Southington High School graduation ceremony. All right, guys.
Second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Gernowski, you have a job?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Any, all in favor? Did anybody oppose? Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Mark, June eighteenth on your calendar, Mrs. Northcutt.
I will.
Please do. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Yeah.